Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Timmy Viegana-Bergency. I'm an assistant professor at the School for the Future of Innovation in Society at Arizona State University. Thank you all for joining us today on what I hope is going to be a really interesting discussion. We're basically going to be focusing on the commercial, social, regulatory risks and opportunities presented by emerging technologies as a support of space exploration and use. The prevailing question on the minds of all is why the hype around blockchain or distributed ledger technologies? And even more pressing here, is blockchain and space even a thing? How can blockchain make a difference in the context of new space-related projects? Or does association with blockchain undermine the credibility of space projects? So in this hour, innovators will talk about blockchain-inspired or enabled space projects and reflect on some of the opportunities and challenges of those projects. So let's just get a hands up in the room. How many of you say 50% comfortable with talking about blockchain? Okay, wow, that's really great. So I hope that this is going to be an interactive kind of discussion. So I'll just give a little bit of a primer. So essentially Bitcoin cryptocurrency was the buzz technology of 2017, which most people didn't really understand technically. But beyond the hype, proponents claim that the underlying technology behind Bitcoin, which is blockchain, has the potential to be transformative based on its governance principles of decentralization, consensus, and transparency. Some would say that the killer application has not yet emerged, but this has not prevented investors from pouring into the field. So for instance, at the SpaceTech Summit, which is a conference that was held in California, the space industry executives, startup founders and investors highlighted that Bitcoin is pretty much where all the investments were going, and they were wondering whether the space sector would now go down that line just to be able to access some of these fundings. But commentators basically argue that it's not clear that space companies are pivoting towards blockchain and cryptocurrencies as suggested. But what is clear, and what we'll show through this panel today, is that there are some projects on that nexus of blockchain and space, and we'll just talk about the wider holistic issues about that. So what then is blockchain for those of us who don't know? This is a fundamental question, and each person will answer it differently. You know how I understand what proponents of blockchain are saying, based on the work that I did at the Center for International Governance Innovation? There's no one blockchain. So blockchain is essentially a shorthand for a whole suite of distributed ledger technologies which can be programmed to record and track anything of value, so from financial transactions to medical records or even land titles. But if there are already processes to track data, you may ask, "What's so special about blockchain?" And why do blockchain proponents think that it stands to revolutionize the way we interact with each other? Well, essentially, I mean, there are three things that I personally see as this: the way blockchain tracks and stores data, the way proponents argue that it creates trust in data, and the fact that it gets rid of intermediaries. So it's these combination of these factors that gives blockchain the potential to underpin so many of the ways in which we interact with one another. But much like the rise of the internet, the technology will bring with it all kinds of complex policy questions around governance, international law, security, and economics. So some other interesting questions are: what are the implications of the premise of using the space medium to avoid regulation for applications that already have so much controversy around it? We have applications for decentralized space agencies, and what about the issue of space diplomacy in these contexts? Today, we have a really interesting group to share some ideas with you. To my right, we have George Anthony Long, who's a managing member at Legal Parallax. He's a lawyer based in the US specializing in space law and US territorial law. To my right, we have Dr. Julie Mopin, who is the Director of Social Impact and Public Regulatory Affairs at Iota Foundation. To my left here, we have Joe Landon, who is the CFO of Planetary Resources. Planetary Resources is embarking on the world's first commercial deep-space exploration program, and they're based in the US. And he's also the chairman of the Space Angels, which is the leading source of capital for early-stage space ventures. To my left furthermore, we have Pavlo Tanassiu, who is the CEO of Block Verify, which is a company that improves supply chains of blockchain, and SpaceBit, an innovative decentralized space company that seeks to democratize access to space by tokenizing commercial space missions. Further still, we have Dimitris Tafodi, a PhD candidate at Leiden University in the Netherlands, who's researching legal and policy aspects of space big data. So I thought a great way to start, I'll let each one of these members just say a quick word about them. But seeing as the idea of what is blockchain is so fundamental to further discussion on it, I thought maybe Pavlo could give us a kind of a primer, an introduction as to what space, what blockchain is. So let's just start with that.
Hello and good afternoon. Well, we already had a brief introduction about what blockchain is, but sometimes it's very important to understand what actually blockchain is not. And the reason for that is because everyone is trying to use blockchain for multiple use cases, including space, and not many people understand how we can actually use it. I've been working with corporates for a very long time, mostly we work in supply chains. And one of the most interesting things that all of them really like this technology, they trying to understand and learn about this technology, but not many of them trying to really innovate with this technology. What I mean by that? So in 2008, we had a white paper by Satoshi Nakamoto. By 2009, we already had the first Genesis mine on the blockchain. We had internet, we had the classic banking, now we're moving towards Web 3.0. But the problem with the blockchain is that large companies not trying truly innovate with this technology, but they're using it for incremental innovation. So I've been working with some of the largest corporations, and sometimes they want to see how they can use blockchain for gradual improvements in their processes, rather than to totally disrupt the business models. And I believe that blockchain technology per se is a technology which can help us to disrupt many industries, not only supply chain, not only banking, but also industries like space. But why is it so problematic? Why so many people talk about blockchain, but not many people understand it? Well, because this is technology which is very deeply rooted in programming. So at the moment, we don't have an application. So here we see an iPhone, which is a user-friendly interface, when everyone can interact with it and do something, download an application. With the blockchain, we don't really have a user-friendly interface where anyone can go and innovate. So innovation at the moment is limited to people who are good with programming, to people who know how to code. And that is why the wider stakeholder agreement in terms of what blockchain is and what it does have always been limited. And it's great to see that many industries are already starting to talk about potential of blockchain, and we have a multi-stakeholder view in terms of what the blockchain technology is and how it should be used. Why is that important? Because information systems are social systems, and blockchain is not different. We use it as a technology, but there are many use cases how we can use this technology. And that is why it is very important that we have a broader outlook as a society, as specific people within specific profession who would address issues around blockchain and try to understand what blockchain is and what it can do. For that, I believe that we should solve a few topics around blockchain, which is identity, standardizations of blockchain. As already been mentioned, we have more than one blockchain. And it's good because it's innovation, and all those blockchains that are out there, they have different protocols, they have different consensus mechanism, and maybe they're suited for different applications as well. But they don't talk to each other as well. So that's something that we have to address as well. How do we talk? How do we have this interoperability between different blockchains? How do we scale blockchains? It's one of the issues as well. For example, Ethereum blockchain, it's a very good project, and there are some very real applications for tokenization, for example. But if you're trying to scale, there are limits. How do we go beyond this? And already we have Iota Foundation, which might be addressing this in their presentation. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So thank you. I think that is a good segue for Julie to basically tell us a little bit about Iota and what the interest is in this topic.
Thanks very much. It's a pleasure to be here today. So I am from the Iota Foundation, as Timmy mentioned, and Iota is a foundation that has been established in Germany here, actually, to develop open-source technology, which is similar to blockchain, but not quite exactly the same. And really is focused on helping machines to build the machine-to-machine economy, where all the devices in our pockets and on our wrists and up in space and everything else are communicating with each other in a secure encrypted fashion, and are able to not only communicate with each other, but also pay each other to sort of bring the payment system and the communication system into one. I get to skip these slides about what are DLTs, because distributed ledger technologies, because Pavlo just went through that a little bit with us. So let me tell you a little bit about how Iota is different from most blockchains. Basically, Iota was set up in 2015 by some entrepreneurs in the blockchain space who were trying to think of ways to solve the scalability problems that are presented by blockchain. And Iota's version of the solution is called the tangle. So the way that data gets stored, batched and stored, and sort of locked into this consensus mechanism in a blockchain is like the picture you see on the left here. So data gets put into blocks, which are timestamped, and then each block builds on the next, and it's kind of stringed together conceptually in a chain. There's only a certain amount of data that can go into each block, and you have to sort of wait for each one to be generated, which creates a little bit of a bottleneck when you want to have a large volume of transactions happening on the network. So for example, in the Bitcoin blockchain, you can do about seven transactions per second, which is quite, quite low when you compare it to something like the banking system or Visa or Mastercard, which are handling about 1,400 transactions per second. So the tangle was developed instead of as a blockchain architecture on the mathematical concept of a directed cyclic graph, which looks like what you see below. So I'm not going to go into the technical stuff of this first, because it's above my pay grade, but also because we don't have that much time. But the main things that are important about this different architecture are, first of all, that it doesn't have what most blockchains have, which are so-called miners, for securing and verifying the network, which means there are no fees for sending a transaction. And it's really focused on enabling the internet of everything. Now, I'm Director of Social Impact, so my job is to figure out how to make these technologies deployable by governments, by intergovernmental organizations, by NGOs and organizations that are helping to improve the lives of people around the world. And we have a problem in my area, which is that the internet isn't everywhere. We still have 1.6 billion people who don't have electricity. We have about 40% of the world's population who don't have an internet connection. They might have smartphones or some sort of data connection, but they don't have internet. And then among those who do, not everybody has full access to the internet, because there's censorship in some countries, carried out in various different ways. So the question, the reason that Iota came to the idea of working on space is to answer the question, "Can space help us go the last mile on Earth?", first of all, and also, "Can distributed ledgers help space objects go the next mile in space?". So I'm going to give a couple of examples of things that we're interested in in this area. So the overall picture to remember here is that nobody can solve all of this on their own. We all have to work together in collaborations of networks. I'll give one very practical example to give you an idea how space might be able to help us solve a concrete problem on the Earth. The Iota Foundation is working together with some entrepreneurs who won last year's Hack for Climate at the climate change meetings in Bonn. And they basically developed a solution that helps, in which they are applying machine learning to satellite imagery that they're collecting to identify what the next areas are that are at risk of deforestation for climate change management and monitoring. And we said, "Well, that's super cool, but wouldn't it be great if we also, in addition to having this satellite imagery, could combine that with sensor data from the ground, from the actual forest, so that we could get information, high-quality information about the effectiveness of the various programs around the world that we're funding for forest preservation? How effective are they really as a carbon sink? We can measure various different components of emissions and what they're putting in, what they're taking out. We can also measure human activities in the forests to see if people are going in and setting fires or clear-cutting. If we can combine the data from the ground and the data from the air or from space, then we'll have a much better way of tracking what's happening in these very important forests that are carbon sinks." So we started working on setting up, figuring out how to set up mesh networks in the forest using remote sensing capabilities. And you can do all kinds of cool things today with mesh networks. And Iota can be used to help these devices to communicate with each other in a secure, tamper-proof fashion. You can use alternate connectivity spectrums, et cetera. And the neat thing is you don't need constant access to power, and you don't need constant internet access. But then you have all this data that you've collected in the Amazon, and you have to figure out how you're going to get that to someplace where you can process it and do something useful with it. So we need to make offline transactions and online transactions come together somehow, and this is how we started looking into space solutions as a possible way forward. There are some interesting grants, which I'm sure some of you have come across, including from the European Space Agency here in Europe, to experiment with using blockchains or DLTs in space, and figuring out how satellites can be used to sort of connect up remote networks on the ground. Getting money to remote places is the same problem, something that we're working on with UNOPs, trying to provide digital identity to humanitarian personnel in far-flung places, helping refugees who don't have a lot of infrastructure reunite with their families. All of these problems are problems that involve these common denominators of lack of connectivity. So that's why we're looking at combining DLTs and space for helping solve problems on Earth. And then the next question, which is also really, really interesting, is, "Can distributed ledger technologies help us go the next mile in space?". So here we start to think about things like self-owning satellites and self-steering satellites. There are a lot, if you go and walk around the exhibition floor out there, you'll see some of them and meet some of them. There are a lot of really amazing entrepreneurs coming up with crazy ideas, some of which will succeed, many of which will fail, but some of which will succeed for how we go the next step in space, whether it's asteroid mining, whether it's Mars, whether it's recycling in space. But it's difficult, because you have to have a certain level of, you have to go past a certain barrier of entry in order to get up there and do that. What if you have a small startup, and you want to be able to do something and experiment with some kind of a space use case, and you can just rent the space, rent time or rent capability from a satellite? From a satellite that owns itself and sort of farms itself out to people who want to pay it over a distributed ledger, maybe using a cryptocurrency? So these are the kinds of things that can be done. We can also equip satellites with technology that allows them, as our orbits get more and more thickly populated, that allows themselves to make orbital corrections, maneuver corrections in space without having to be controlled from the ground, and to pay each other for getting out of each other's way to avoid collisions, things like this. So these are some of the things that we're working on. And we're going to be having a longer workshop later on this afternoon, which I heartily invite you to stop by, assuming there's still capacity or still room, to be, together with our partners from the GIZ Blockchain Lab and with Orbit Recycling. So if you're interested in some more of these kind of far-fetched, how distributed ledgers can reinvent space, and also space governance, how we assign orbits, how we manage orbits, how we incentivize people to remove space junk, that's what we'll be talking about this afternoon. Thanks.
Thank you for that example. And so I think we'll go now more broadly and just talk about the field of activities that we're seeing in this space. So I'm going to go to Joe. Joe is the CFO of Planetary Resources, but also chairman of the Space Angels. So I know that you've been watching the trend of blockchain over the couple of years with interest. So maybe you can give us your overview of what you've been following and what you've been seeing over the past year.
Sure, thanks. So my role at Planetary Resources, so our focus is on developing the capability to find and develop and use resources in space to fuel and to supply the in-space economy. So we've spent a lot of time and have done a lot of work on the technical challenges associated with developing space resources, but we also have spent time understanding the demand side. So in order to develop a space resources capability, you need to have an economy in space that needs resources. And that really is the reason why I've spent time researching and studying blockchain over about the last year and a half. Our goal is to use blockchain and other tools as a way to develop a robust in-space economy. Now, blockchain, I think, can enable and encourage economic activity at space. Thinking about the space economy, I just want to make a few comments on that as context to why blockchain, I think, is an exciting tool for space. So if you look at some of the reports, the space industry is reported to have about $360 billion of annual revenue. So that's the sort of space industry. But I would argue that that's not the space economy. So every one of those $360 billion or euros or rubles, whatever, is exchange between a person on Earth directly to another person on Earth. The economic activity takes place on Earth today, it doesn't take place in space. So what I am interested and passionate about is developing that in-space economy. So economic activity that happens in space, that's like space-native economic activity. So right now, there is a very tiny in-space economy, and it takes place across the dinner table on the space station of six astronauts bartering their desserts or whatever. That's it. That's the space economy. So there's opportunities to use tools like blockchain to encourage and enable that space economy, things like technology for collaboration, so blockchain can be used as a governance model to encourage people who are not able to participate in the space economy today to have a way to participate, and use token economics to design systems that can accomplish goals and overcome challenges in unique ways in space. The idea of distributed ledgers and a specific use case that we've been looking at is a token-curated registry, where you have a list that is decentralized, so it's not owned by anyone, but it's curated by a community of experts or people to maintain lists of things like orbital objects, or planets, or stars, or asteroids, or whatever. And also the idea of smart contracts, which is inherent to many of the blockchain applications like the Ethereum blockchain. You can use software to define smart contracts that execute autonomously when certain conditions are met. So this is enabling for space transactions, because transactions between economic actors in space may be taking place far from Earth and without the ability to quickly communicate with Earth. So we want to have the ability to do autonomous economic transactions in space. And lastly, there's opportunity to use blockchain as a funding mechanism for space projects for companies and for other types of projects by doing token offerings and sort of leveraging that token economics that I mentioned earlier. So we'll probably get into more detail with that. That is the sort of context for why Planetary Resources is interested in learning about blockchain.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. I don't know. So Pavlo, as well as being the CEO of Block Verify, you also founded SpaceBit. So I don't know whether there are many similarities between, you know, how you got into the space side of things, or maybe you can tell us a little bit more about what you've been seeing in the space side.
Yes, absolutely. I started quite early in blockchain space, so since 2012, I was already involved in cryptocurrencies. And by 2013, I came up with the idea of space banking, so actually banking for the space economy. And we started looking how we can transact in space, how we can generate value, which is not derived from Earth resources, but in space, and how we can transact with Earth as well. So the first project, called the First Space Bank, started in 2014, early 2014, and we kind of developed it on a theoretical level and still working on that project. And later on, we started looking into practical applications of blockchain, something that can be done now. And personally, our company, SpaceBit, is looking at two ways to use blockchain. First one is how we can use blockchain as a technology, and I will show a few examples of that. And the second one is how blockchain technology can be used for new models of governance, as well as funding mechanism. And when I say funding mechanism, I don't mean funding the script unnecessarily, but I mean tokenizing existing Earth-based or space assets and then obviously trading them. Shall I do it now or presentation or a bit later? Okay. Thank you.
I think there's something that you said that's interesting there. You're talking about new models of governance. And then what I really like is obviously Julie's portfolio is working on social impact. So we've got this idea that blockchain can, you know, we're giving positive examples, but maybe I'll go to you, George, and say, you know, as a lawyer interested in governance and regulatory aspects, you know, there's lots of positive things that we can say, but there's also concerns that people have with emerging technologies. For instance, one blockchain company that's working in space, on their website, they said they're developing a space-based platform because it offers greater redundancy and security for decentralized space applications, since satellites are resistance to regulation and control by government and corporate entities. So there is the concern there that people have, that, you know, you're now trying to combine these technologies because you're trying to get away from something. So can you speak to that?
Sure, I can. Basically, in a nutshell, I don't think that will happen. But first, I would just like say, as a lawyer, I'm essentially a member of what, at least in the United States, we call it the fire brigade. Our job is a lot of times to come in and just throw water and cool down the latest hot idea and hot innovations, because there's a lot of considerations that have to be taken with respect to a client's exposure to risk. With respect to outer space, Article VI of the Outer Space Treaty is often construed as imposing upon a state to supervise and control the activities of its nationals. Now, within that context and sphere, that means a state has a duty to regulate what its nationals can and can't do in space, or at least have a reporting obligation from its nationals. So the notion that you can avoid government oversight or government regulation by having a transaction or ledger interest in space, I don't think that's practical, given the nature of Article VI and how it is currently construed. But there are questions, though, that come up as to how as a blockchain transaction, how is it classified? Because that's important, because then it would go to which actual agency of government will regulate or has the responsibility over a given transaction. And as I understand it, blockchain is essentially a database. And as such, how do you classify it? If each transaction is separate and distinct, and they all cannot be lumped in together, then you have to determine on a case-by-case basis what your reporting obligations may be, which federal agency you have to report to, or which federal agency may have oversight regulation, and you can then perhaps challenge whether the appropriate agency is oversighting or regulating. Those are the type of legal issues that will be confronted by this new and emerging technology. Thank you.
Thank you. So Julie is also a lawyer, but you're also a technologist and an innovator. So, you know, obviously you've heard a lot of concerns about the use of emerging technologies such as blockchain. Do you think that, is there anything distinct about working in the space context that would make it stand out? Or do you think it's simply another domain? I mean, there's some interesting projects that you're doing. You talked about autonomous, you know, satellites being able to talk to each other autonomously. And I know that you guys have a project with a car manufacturer about that. So what are the distinctions and the challenges that you would face in both those domains?
The technological distinctions are pretty large, obviously. When we look at applying a distributed ledger technology, for example, in self-driving cars, where you want to have cars communicating with each other and sensors in the vehicles to avoid collisions, things like that, or you give the cars a wallet so that they can pay for their own recharging station use, or they can pay automatically tolls on roadways, things like that. You know, you're moving in the Earth environment, where you have certain limitations around speed, just sort of physical limitations and things. Up in space, on the one hand, if you think about doing something like orbital collision avoidance, using a distributed ledger technology with these kinds of sort of payment, pay for maneuvering kinds of mechanisms. On the one hand, because we have the ability to track orbital movements of objects in space fairly accurately, at least as long as we have access to the right databases, we can predict these things in advance, and we have time to plan for it and sort of take these evasive actions. On the other hand, when satellites get close, they're moving really, really fast. And you really have to make sure that you calculate correctly and that you're dealing with also with random and chaotic movements in space, which are quite difficult. So the technological environment is different. From the regulatory perspective, space is, you know this as well as I do as a fellow lawyer, space is sort of viewed by international lawyers as one of the things that belongs to the common heritage of mankind or humankind. And as a result, we have the Space Treaty, which you've mentioned, and we have other sort of notions of common usage of space. But it's being really tested and challenged now by movements, by national parliaments to make claims about asteroid mining or carve out private property rights in space. So this economy of things in space, the economy of space, which we don't really have yet, as you rightly point out, also will very much depend on the clarification of these legal frameworks. Because in the same way that we've had to clarify them on Earth, we will have to clarify them in space. So I think that there's no escaping. You can't just go up into space and escape the law. But you should think about it differently, because space is common heritage of humankind and of the universe and everything else that's out there that we don't even know about yet.
I would like to challenge that a bit. I mean, what if you have, and we're not far off, from having spacecraft manufactured in space, doing things in space, and like, for instance, getting fuel from somewhere and selling it to someone else for use in space? So there's no connection to the Earth economy or government at all in that. I mean, each individual component of that system, at some point, something had to get launched into space. But if we're using in-space resources to do things in space, like, we start to lose the connection to terrestrial governments at that point.
Yeah, I also strongly agree with that. I believe one day we might have to produce another Articles of Independence for space. And probably it will be sooner than we all think, especially as our colonies develop and robotic technology in space develops as well.
But to that, speaking of that point, you have to go back to Article Eight of the Outer Space Treaty, which essentially says that a state that has launched a space vehicle, it retains jurisdiction and control. Now, granted, it goes back to what you mean by launch. If you construct an object in space and then place it in orbit, does that consider a launch of which the state has control over? It's so, and most likely, it will be construed that way. All right, because there's no way, you know, states are going to allow these things to happen. That then you do have a basis for a jurisdiction of a state. Plus, under Article Six, when a state has construed, is giving a state responsibility for its nationals' activities, then there's always, a national will be answerable to a state for whatever it does in space, regardless of whom a spacecraft may be registered to. So there will be some legal recourse along the way. But the more interesting or fascinating aspect, I think, from a lawyer's perspective, is going to be one of jurisdiction. Where exactly will jurisdiction rest when you have, let's say, like, an open source? If I understand blockchain correctly, it's sort of like an open-source database to a certain extent. And if disputes arise, how can you determine where is the appropriate jurisdiction should be? Is it where the error occurred, or where the adverse effect of an error occurred? Or could it be any point along the node in a blockchain? Where would that jurisdiction be? And that's important with respect to a client, because you always want to have some idea of managing where you may be subject to suit. But if you're open to suit anywhere and everywhere, that becomes sort of a legalistic nightmare from a legal perspective. Thank you.
Julie?
Yeah, I'll just respond quickly to both of those points. From the perspective of jurisdiction, we already have very good analogies in the legal system with the international arbitration system as well. So we just let people choose themselves contractually where they want to have their disputes settled, if they have a dispute that doesn't seem to fit in one box or the other, which happens all the time in international business. And that's a very active area of international legal practice, as you know. And there's no reason why we couldn't have the same thing for space. But with respect to this notion that we might need a new, what did you call it, a new pact or treaty?
Well, let's call it Declaration of Independence.
Declaration of Independence for space, right.
Let's go to one point where you mentioned the arbitration with all that standby agreement. And if we're dealing with an open-source database where different people can have access to, or maybe utilize, then would there have to be a requirement that in order for you to access and utilize and participate in this blockchain, you will previously have to agree as to an arbitration provision, or agree to a jurisdiction? And then at that point, it's a truly open source. Thank you.
I want to bring Dimitri on on this, because George mentioned Article Six and talking about, you know, the state that has continuing supervision. So, I mean, I know that you've been doing some work with Luxembourg, you've been doing some work with the Hague Resources. So how are you seeing the evolution of regimes in countries, emerging countries such as Luxembourg? And how does that play into these new and emerging technologies that are coming?
That's a very good question, and I really don't want to bore the audience with a legal discussion about everything. But I want to point out before I come to your question that the legal implications of blockchain, that to the legal discussion again, will be translated to data, whatever that might mean, is that, I'm sorry, I was saying that the whole discussion will affect management decisions, will affect corporate decision further on where one of these companies will be established, whether it will be established into outer space or not. I would like to bring into the discussion even more legal questions, and apart from the Outer Space Treaty, of course. There are also issues very much related to data, and these issues have to do with privacy, these issues have to do with security. When, of course, it comes to data, to astronomical data, or to planetary sources data, that's all right, that's an information that we could perhaps all share. But when it comes to smart contracts that you talked about, to banking, to a lot of more limited, more personal, more sensitive information, what the legal regime is now and what it will evolve to be will play a very important decision, very much outside the legal scope, and perhaps also affecting technological development, whether you know what you can do or you cannot. Considering how this whole development has affected other areas of space activities, such as space resources, which is the number-one issue apparently lately, and blockchain that is becoming there, it's coming there with a nexus between the space and the Earth and what we're all doing. I believe that either there can be a breakthrough and a country can say that I regulated and I recognize certain things, and this will help so much, any private company or public endeavor that would go and operate in this regard, and eventually, other countries will follow as well. Or if we do maintain things the way they are, because sometimes I feel that legal restrictions are considered as actually a very bad thing, and I want to believe that it's a very good thing. It protects us all if we do take them into account. Acknowledging the legal aspects in the very beginning of the discussion might not create the need to consider another legal framework. We can take what we have, think, what are the technological aspects that we already know, what are the legal aspects we already know, and bring those together.
Awesome. Thank you. You see, there's a lot of lawyers here. But let's take it away from the law, and let's go to Pavlo. And Pavlo, so maybe you can tell us a little, take us back to the technology, take us back to the actual applications, and tell us a little bit more about SpaceBit. I think you had a presentation.
Yep. First one is the technology, and it will be used in various technological applications. And we will never know that they exist. They will be functioning as a base layer for a space economy on Earth. Our cars will pay, satellites will transact as well. That's something that we'll never have to actually interact with. And also, there will be applications such as funding, tokenization, something that we'll probably have to think again and to revisit our existing economic models and to create a new one. So talking about blockchain applications for space industry. As I earlier mentioned, I believe that it will be disrupted, not incremental innovation, as blockchain is a truly technology which can help us to disrupt and create new economic and business models with the technology. My first company in the blockchain space, which is working in the supply chains. So for us, it was an obvious door into space industry as well, and we're working with a number of large players in the industry on how we can trace parts, how we can actually trace specific blueprints, and from the IP owner all the way to production. Also, we look at the DLT for tokenization of assets and data in space segment. De-bridification, projects like that are also something which we are running. And as previously was mentioned, IAT and specifically GPS-based devices using blockchain technology, specifically CubeSat, is a very interesting concept as well. So in terms of the real projects which are already running, I would like to show you a project that is running together with a company called Gunhili. Gunhili is the largest private ground station on Earth. We currently have this product in demo. It's a better version, and we're already working with the pre-selected number of partners and testing this product. What it is, is basically a decentralized ground station network, which allows you to organize ground stations in this light way, schedule, communication with satellite, automatically pay for the data transmission and for time that you're using, bid on specific time slots, which are more important than the other, and many other interesting things. And that takes, basically, it's an Earth-based system which is helping the space economy. And that's the first step for us to kind of see how blockchain can be used for space economy as well. So how does it actually work? So OrbitLinks, and product is called LinkX, is a decentralized application. It's enabled by DLT technology, distributed ledger technology, and it powered by smart contracts. At the moment, we are using EOS blockchain, developed by a company called BlockOne. I believe it's the first space application on EOS network. And that's how the system looks from the satellite provider. So basically, you can book times using the system, and it will transact using tokens. Doesn't really mean that you have to pay in cryptocurrency. It means that we have some tokens behind the system, and the actual transaction can occur in US dollars, in euros, or any other currency as you may wish. So what it helps to do, I don't know how many of you are aware of this problem of scheduling of satellite dishes, you can access your global antennas network using this system instantaneously from your web interface. You can schedule the satellite communications from your web interface, or even mobile interface, which is very important. And it's all made using the decentralized application. So it's basically introducing a new model of governance to this model of communication. And the next step for us will be looking at data and data transmission and data tokenization. But as I previously mentioned, one of the interesting aspects for blockchain is the tokenization aspect. And one of the projects we are currently exploring is the mutual ownership platform for space exploration. What this platform will do, it's a platform, as we envision it, where everyone will be able to invest into space exploration, into space commercialization. At the moment, only big companies, governments are investing, but taxpayers paying for that. But actually, there is very little direct engagement of users, of people into space project, both from the investment perspective and from the project perspective, running the actual project. And if you look at the crypto economy, it's quite large, so it's, at the moment, it's around $200 billion. And if you look at the budget of the different countries, for example, Japan is around $1 billion per year. So even crypto economy of its own can support large-scale missions, even at this point in time. Not necessarily that it should do, because tokenization doesn't really mean using cryptocurrency for space. It means that we can use those tokens as the accounting mechanism and transact using smart contracts, which is a very interesting concept. Why do we have to think about tokenization for space? Well, because investments at the moment are very limited. So we have some funds who are already investing into space ventures. We have government who is putting money into space ventures. But unfortunately, average investor would not work with most of the space companies. And the reason for that is that the cycle of the innovation, the cycle of the economic benefits that you're getting from the space venture is much larger and longer than any other business. We're talking about decades. And would you be really willing to lock your capital for a decade or two? That's questionable. So by introducing tokenization model, we can actually create new asset classes and then make them tradable on exchanges, crypto exchanges or conventional exchanges. And then the security tokens will bring liquidity and differentification into existing portfolio of investors. That's something that we are looking at the moment, and we will be having announcement very soon. And you can use this tokenization to localize many things. You can have tokens for Mars, tokens for asteroids, or tokens for some Earth-based assets as well. Well, some of this might be quite speculative, but I really believe that tokenization is a very powerful concept, that will play a very important role in the future commercialization of space. And I'd like to play a short video about SpaceBit. This video is envisioning what we can do. It's not only about our company, it's actually about many companies presented in this room. So we're not going to do all the things that we mentioned in this video, but I believe conceptually, it's very important to understand what can be done with blockchain technology. So I'm just going to play this video, and hopefully, it works.
Space exploration has always been limited to governments and big corporations. Citizens have never been able to directly take part or get benefits from space programs. What if everyone could have the possibility to participate in space projects? The time of great change has come. Access to newly advanced technologies has helped to reduce the costs of space missions, whilst blockchain technology allows the building of new decentralized economic models that will drive the future of space exploration. Introducing SpaceBit. We are a team of leading internationally recognized professionals. All we do is underpinned by our pioneering space research. Our main goal is to run commercial space missions and to democratize access to space exploration. Our plan is to tokenize space missions, from CubeSats in low orbit to the moon projects and asteroid mining. Our aim is to decentralize what once was only accessible for governments and large organizations. Participate in SpaceBit today. Join the future of space exploration at spacebit.com. Join our mission to the moon.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So I'm just going to open up to questions from the panel first, and then I'll open it up to questions from the audience. So does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do. Just briefly, under United States law, it's a federal crime to actually transact business or to do business with certain entities, whether it's North Korea, Iran, ISIS, Al Qaeda. Is there any protocols built into the blockchain system to detect whether you're actually any persons from these prohibited areas are trying to participate in a transaction? And if so, what type of protocols are they?
So probably, you're talking about basic IML and KYC procedures. So yes, sometimes they are in place, and for example, all the projects that we do, we make sure that we have KYC and IML in place. And I believe that's something which will be very important in the future, and you will still be able to do the same things that you do in conventional banking. What is important is actually the high What is important is actually the high level of traceability that blockchain offers. So if you have interaction with some malicious actors, you will be able to trace this interaction in many, many steps after the interaction has happened, which is not actually possible in a conventional banking system.
And one other interesting point is that a lot of token offerings, so if people are selling security tokens and raising financing for their company using a cryptocurrency, often it's US citizens who are excluded from that. Everyone else can participate in many of these sales, except Americans.
The flip side of that, of course, is that I agree that in the current state of affairs on most blockchains, it's actually, it's a bad, it's a really bad idea to do things like try to do business with Iran on the blockchain because there's a lot of data collected about you and it's quite easy to find you. You'd be much better using cash. But there are, not that I'm advising you to do that. But there are, there are other types of technologies that have come along. And this is a serious concern because you, a lot of data is collected and transmitted using blockchains. And here we are, you know, at the I S E in Europe, where the general data protection regulation has recently come into force in May of this year. And some governments really take privacy quite seriously in terms of data privacy. And that's important. And it will become more and more important as we have more and more data being generated by all the devices that we wear and use and interact with, both on Earth and in space. And there are people who are working on blockchains using advanced techniques in cryptography called zero knowledge proofs and other things, which make it difficult, if not impossible, actually to identify individual people and individual transactions. You might think it's a double-edged sword. On the one hand, it really protects user privacy and it makes it possible for us to do things like monitor health data and gather data for clinical trials and things on the basis of widespread populations that you otherwise wouldn't get access to because it's too sensitive. And insurance companies, they got access to that. That would be bad. But on the other hand, you do have difficulties then with doing, figuring out how to do things like stop money laundering or human trafficking or all these bad things that you want to stop. There are solutions. We can, we can take this conversation offline. But the point is, there are many ways to use the technology and we always have to think about these, the, what's the consequence of taking it down this road?
So let me open it up to you. So we've heard a couple of examples of projects that are happening in the space context with blockchain. We've heard about some of the governance or regulatory or legal issues. So kind of you guys out there, half of you said that you have some awareness of blockchain. What are the pressing questions that you have or what have you thought about in this nexus of blockchain and space? Do we have anyone? No question? Oh, yes.
Thank you so much for a great conversation. I have a question regarding the future hardware that we're going to see for that kind of, those kind of operations. Do you think that each object is going to have their own communication system and processing system? Or are we going to see something like a server, like a couple of servers around different orbits? What do you think is going to be the future of that kind of operations?
Yes, so I'll take a crack at that. I think we're seeing some trends for decentralization, but like a different decentralization. So now spacecraft tend to have everything they need all within one physical device. But we're starting to see companies like Analytical Space is an example, where they are developing communications nodes so that small spacecraft that are collecting data can focus on the data collection and not worry about having a high-power, high-bandwidth communication system. They can just sort of hop over to a nearby satellite that then is specifically designed for high-bandwidth communication. So we're seeing trends like that. And I think we'll continue to see more in different domains as well.
Well, I believe also we'll see a lot of commodification in the space hardware happening. Something which has happened with the computers will probably be happening with the space hardware as well.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about the way in which we've seen the development with I O T devices and the vast differentiation that we have in I O T devices and the processing power that they have, the storage that they have, the energy requirements that they have and all those sorts of things. I think the same thing we'll see happening in space, particularly with the big push right now toward nano satellites. Because, you know, the aim is to really bring the cost down of participating somehow in space. And when you do that, you have to make trade-offs. You can't have everything. And in the same way that, you know, with the $300 million satellite of yesterday that you launch. If you're launching something up into space for $7,000, you're going to see differentiated products doing differentiated things.
Okay, so I have a, I'm going to challenge the panel a little bit. I'm over here, sorry. I'm over here. I'm going to challenge you to find me first. The challenge is, you say you want to be disruptive and not incremental. I'm challenging you, I'm a space debris guy and I worry about space situational awareness and sharing of data. And something that I have written about, that I feel strongly about is that I think you need to first find where there's pain. I think where there's pain is in the sharing of space situational awareness data. So right now, there are people, United States, in Switzerland, in Russia, in China, in Brazil, anybody who has a telescope can help contribute to the problem, contribute to the solutions, explaining where people are, how they can help. And right now, there's no way to bring that together. And so I believe the blockchain may have the incrementally aggressive approach is to try to first bring together data that makes you safer as a way to show an exemplar of the benefit, rather than going right to doing your Tesla hookup, you know, getting paid for servicing up there. I think right now, we have a real problem about the data for space safety. And that's where I think there might be, it's not disruptive, but I think it's incrementally aggressive. So I'd like to hear the panel's thoughts on that.
Thank you very much for raising that point. And you should come to the afternoon session because Salome, who's sitting here in the front row or the second row, will be talking about a way to use blockchain to improve our worldwide knowledge of objects in space and tracking and how we can do that. I mean, right now, we have, we have Unusa. Everybody's supposed to register objects to the international database. But, you know, that's an obligation that not everyone fulfills universally. The estimates are somewhere around 90%, I think, of objects that are registered. But maybe that's even quite ambitious. But there are entities, of course, the, you know, the database kept maintained by NORAD, for example, is no doubt far more accurate than what we have at the international level. And there are good governance reasons for, you know, arguing in favor of a system whereby the management of knowledge about space objects and space debris is not held by a particular actor or a particular set of actors, but really shared in a distributed way by everyone who is a spacefaring entity or spacefaring nation. So yeah, come, come listen to Salome later.
Yeah, so I have to leave in a little bit. That's why I want to make sure I can talk to him now.
Perfect.
Yes, and also, when we talk about disruptive innovations, the concept first was created by Shumpeter. And he talked about disruptive innovation, not only as something that we do in one moment, but something which is happening behind the scenes and might have several stages. So I believe we should stick with that Shumpeter notion of the disruptive innovation. And in terms of incremental steps, we are already working on some interesting projects around space debris and I would be willing to talk to you personally after.
Yeah, but I think the issue you raised of orbital debris is really the most exciting potential application for blockchain technology that solves a real problem right now. Doing a token curated registry of objects solves a lot of the coordination problems and the information sharing problems that's true in that space. And these disparate databases that are controlled by centralized entities, we can decentralize that and provide economic incentives for those folks with telescopes to contribute to the, to the data.
Sergio, you have a question?
Thank you. My name is Sergio Cotavoy and I am founder, actually, of two projects, JetSpace and CleanSpace, connected with space debris removal. The business concept is connected, creating marketplace for space debris removal and then companies could spend earned coins for launching new satellites into space. And in this connection, I would like to mention the note that Joy said that blockchain market is not for Americans. We consider now a business model to avoid this obstacle to register our project from the very beginning in securities commission. And in such case, we believe that American market, that American users could become the customers of our project. And my question to lawyers, is it correct approach? Do you believe that such kind of approach could avoid such obstacle like regulations from the side of American law?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, but I'll take a crack at answering that anyway.
No, I'm sorry, Joy. I mentioned you, you actually raised this issue, but my question is to other lawyers if you'll...
But my, my thought is, you know, this, the regulatory environment around token offerings in the US is still emerging and changing. So I think the best practice, I think that is emerging, is that yes, register, you know, follow the rules, do a security offering, like consider it a security offering and just go through that process instead of trying to get around it. I think it's what people are leaning towards.
Yes, also, as a person who was director and directly involved in a number of token distribution events, I would say that difference between security offering and token offering is sometimes token being sold internationally. And security, you have to do in every single jurisdiction that you offering your security for the consumer, which is quite difficult to do. So at the moment, even security offerings that we have for tokens, they are only based around major jurisdictions where you should be worried, first of all. And they really don't talk about some other jurisdiction where their tokens might be selling as well.
And I just think it's also best to comply with whatever you determine to be the applicable United States standards because the United States basically has a broad reach and a very unforgivable position when it comes down to its positions of money laundering and what he calls terrorist finance and terrorism. And they feel that as a result of that, they have the right to require as to, you know, transactions that American citizens may be engaging in and whom they are doing business with. It's a very broad reach and they can be quite relentless in pursuing that.
We also should not forget about secondary market because as soon as you talking started to be tradable one of the exchanges, you should, you make sure that those exchanges comply with those rules as well and they have right I M L and K Y C procedures in place. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Yes, at the back.
Thank you. My question is for, especially for Pablo, if you have any idea or notion about new players in the small satellite industry that are willing to use your blockchain and your system similar to the booking system for, for tracking, but for scientific data, so for using, for tokenization of scientific data? And yeah, if you could give us a small, your idea about this topic?
I believe that in ideal world, it's a very good idea and you can really build a very good economic models around scientific data. Been a few attempts to do that even in crypto world. There haven't been any successful one. And why, the reason is not certain. Financing may be one of those reasons. So those projects were not the most financed one. We are also looking at data and how we can build some incentives around scientific data specifically. We have some ideas and I'm sure that other panelists have thought about it as well. But I believe that here we, we have to understand that the crypto markets at the moment are governed by crypto people and they have a very specific approach to investment. So to answer your question, yes, I believe that we actually should do something like that and I am ready to talk to you afterwards. But unfortunately, as the majority of crypto investors are people from crypto, not from space or from science, then their approach to the investment into your token would be very different from what you would initially envision. But on the long term, I believe that definitely we should do that and that can help science kind of the next mile.
On this question of data, scientific data, I think there's also really important policy considerations as well because scientific data can of course be monetized and you can create economies around it. But there are also instances in which you want to make scientific data publicly available for academic research, not for pay and, you know, not put it behind paywalls and things like that. So I think that these are really important questions that have to be thought through also together with academics, with research institutions. I'm not exactly sure what you mean when you say scientific data, but there are, there are commercial types of data or commercializable types of data. And then there are other types of data, which we really would love to see actually in the public domain for everyone to use. The example that I gave about the climate project, for example, you can have commercial applications of that in the secondary markets because the data gets fed into the carbon trading system and it's used to set carbon baselines and carbon credits for carbon trading among corporations. But the data itself, we'd like to have that available on an open data marketplace because you also want to have climate researchers be able to identify effective carbon sinks and programs that are actually helping to benefit climate change as opposed to things that are ineffectual and we should not be funding them. So I think a little bit of thought needs to go into what you mean by scientific data and, and really work together with the right academic partnerships to figure out those models.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I, I believe that we don't have actually conflict between private and public and commercial versus public. And actually blockchain allows to build those complex, to map those complex economic models and to create something new which would take multiple stakeholders into consideration, which was never possible before. And that's something we should be looking into. And if you look at the, most of the talking sales and you actually read the white paper of those talking sales, that economic models there mostly describe how talking is functioning rather than actual complex economy behind the talking, unfortunately. So if someone is willing to work on that with us and with other panelists, I'm sure that we will be willing to help and see what we can do.
Sorry, I just had a question. Just to expand a little bit on the blockchain element and a little bit more on the scientific research and scientific data extraction dimension of things. Do you have, are there any examples that you're able to give or that you're able to share as far as pure scientific and academic research, particularly relating to deep space exploration or interstellar, intergalactic kind of exploration that has either been identified as being aided by through blockchain technology or has already been explored in that domain?
Yes, I can give you one example. NASA, the most recent NASA mission working on blockchain is with the University of Akron. And they're essentially working on deep space missions and satellites being able to operate autonomously. So that's one project that basically started, I think, earlier this year. I don't know if anyone knows of any other projects, but that's one that I know of.
I believe that University of Berkeley was trying to use some incentives, blockchain mining and utilization of computer resource to actually analyze the scientific data.
There's also another project which is adjacent to this, which is, it's not scientific data, but it's exploration data. It's called For All Moon Kind. I don't know if you've heard of this, but it's, it's a ledger of all the significant historical exploration locations on the moon to sort of capture that data and preserve it. So that is maybe moving in the direction of something that you're talking about.
Any other questions? Over here.
At the beginning, you introduced blockchain as providing transparency, decentralization. Yeah, but the point is, now is the lot of lawyers thinking from the caring about how actually to work against this or how laws are working against this. Wouldn't be the first thing to tackle to, yeah, to set a declaration of independence in place before starting going in this direction otherwise or the issues with USA, Iran and the persons from countries who are not allowed to attend in so on. Actually, this is a bit contradicting to the idea.
Can I try to answer first as I started? Well, I agree with you to a certain degree, but also blockchain technology is just a technology, just a ledger, maybe with smart contracts on top of it. And it doesn't really help to enforce what is happening on the blockchain. So who is the enforcer? How are you going to create a new social economic model? Where is the military? How are you going to protect it? So those questions are not answered. So if machines are working with machines and they follow those rules, might be okay. But as soon as we start having humans around, it doesn't really work because humans, we work in a society, we work as a social mechanism, social system, duality of institution and agency, it's all kind of changing. And blockchain is kind of ultimate version of truth. We don't work that way as humans. So for example, So for example, as, there was a project in Africa where people were trying to put their properties on a register because in that particular country, there is no property register. And it works well. So actually you can put your property in register, you can see that you own something and other people can testify on that. But does it actually help you to protect the boundaries of the property someone tries to invade it? So that's what the government's function is. It's one of the functions, there are many other functions of government as well. So blockchain can help us with certain things, but what about the society at large and how we are going to replace other societal functions that government and other non-governmental institutions are doing in a society? But I like the idea of independence, so let's do it.
So let's just take one last question.
So hi, apologies for coming in late. I really understand very little about blockchain and the technologies around it. And I, I would like to try and get a feel for what is the specific advantage of a distributed ledger versus centralized server-based databases and communication backflow of those? What are those specific advantages in space-based environments? And what is the differentiator? Where, where does the, where do we go over the hump where it's, we're not just all hyping up with potential business models that make a buck, but where is the real fundamental advantage?
This is the million dollar question, right? This is the most important question to answer. So I think that the fundamental advantage, there are many, many, there are many, many places where you're absolutely right. Blockchain doesn't necessarily offer advantages over a centralized database or a distributed database, a more traditional classical style distributed database. And I think we all, we have to be very open and honest about the fact also that the technology is developing, it's new, it's nascent. The so-called public permissionless ledgers, the open ones, are not production ready. They're not production ready in terms of transactions per second, they're not production ready in terms of security in various different ways. Each project has its own challenges and it's, it's working to solve those from a different, from a different set of technological parameters. But, so what we do see, the experiments that we see happening today are almost all exclusively happening on private permissioned ledgers, which are, you know, just a step away, removed away from just a distributed database, basically. That said, when you want to think about reinventing space governance, if you want to think about democratizing ownership of satellites or use of satellites or space exploration or other kinds of models, if you want to think about getting beyond nationalized registries and reliance upon national rules that are limiting in various different ways to different parts of humanity, then having distributed, truly distributed ledger that is not centrally controlled by any particular party and can't be controlled by any particular party and also where you can't cut off access, there's no one party that can cut off everybody else's access. That is a new model. It's a new way of going about things. It's highly controversial because, you know, one of the big uses of space is military and there are certain countries that don't want all of their satellites tracked closely for various reasons, right? And it's, it's political, it's highly political. But I think that the, the key to moving forward in these kinds of sort of transformative technology settings is always for people who believe in the vision to build it and to create competition from the outside. Show that it works, show that it actually is the future and create pressure on the existing system by, just simply by gaining adoption and by gaining popularity. And that puts pressure then eventually on the incumbent players and the big sort of political forces to get with the program and move into the next century.
I think that that's a really, really great point to end because, you know, when, when coming, in coming up with doing this session, it was really last year in the height of the blockchain buzz. And it was really seeing blockchaining everything, you know, everything, everything is about how can you have a blockchain version? And, you know, it's not that I jumped on the bandwagon, but I just thought, hang on a minute, this is a technology that has captured the public imagination. Why? Like what is it about this? And, and who are the people who are thinking about this in kind of different ways? And it's really interesting because I brought Joe on because he, you know, he's a, he's a funder in the, in the, in the sector. So it's a case of, you know, some people are going to move in front of something even though people don't really fully understand it yet. And our job is really to question, okay, what is the potential here? So after this, we have a workshop where we're going to dive into a use case and really figure out with industry participants, is there something here? We're going beyond hype, but this is a solution that has worked for some people really well. So how do we take the benefits of that and see whether they apply in specific contexts? And the great thing, I'm so happy to have, you know, Julie and also to have Franz here from GIZ is because they're saying if we speak to industry and it doesn't work, then that, we know that that's a solution. That means that that doesn't work in this context, that the industry don't buy it and it doesn't work. So I think we should have spaces where we can deliberate about the potential of future technologies and just see where we go from there. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank my panel for, you know, coming here and sharing your thoughts and your projects with us. And thank you to the audience for being here with us today. Thank you.[1794.41][1794.41]